Um, okay. Um, is that longer than, I mean, to make sure that the enforcement of policy in Oregon is actually working and people are familiar with it and comfortable with it, seeing how it can work? I would think that four months is like a short period of time.
Well, I think personally my input is, you know, we're gonna get the, we're gonna get the policy, they can read the policy, um, you know, as per an email that we circulated, you know, the county may be making a decision too, and that might sway some people, so I think four months is probably reasonable, but, you know, I recognize your, you know, your comments, Councilwoman, that no one will probably have gotten through the encroachment process to know whether or not they're happy with it, and that's a very reasonable comment.
So it's approximately four months.
Well, I think we can't say approximately, I think it's gotta be a
Definitely.
Time frame.
Four months it is. Right. Four months it is.
At least four months before we do returns on the credit council from the screen.
Thanks, Gary.
And we'll start with Park, who was educating about the enforcement of this.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, all, all, well, I
I'm sure we'll find out about it if the county issues a statement. That's a guarantee. Okay, beautiful. We're gonna go ahead and close that item and move on to item number 17, resolution authorizing the contribution towards other post-employment benefits, long-term liabilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have the written staff report. Consistent with the direction in fiscal year 1415 budget, we would use prior year educational revenue augmentation fund, EREF, to pay towards other post-employment benefits, OPEP, pension, or one-time capital projects. With this contribution, the town will have, the town will have approximately $4.3 million in the trust for OPEP. We will be doing a refresh of the actuarial data in the fall to include recent personnel benefit changes as well as all town contributions. The refresh will provide the town with a new annual required contribution. With that data, we can then make an informed decision with respect to how much more, if any, we should contribute into the trust and exactly how we can divide up the reduced annual required contribution between the annual operating budget and the trust going forward. So staff's recommendation is that you adopt the resolution authorizing the contribution of 2013-14 EREF in the amount of 20,000 dollars into the OPEP trust. That concludes the staff report.
Uh, thank you, George. Any questions for staff? Councilwoman Lewis, any questions? Apologize the train.
Um, is there any online questions that I can
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Lewis. No further questions from council. Can I have any questions from the public? Seeing no questions from the public, I'm gonna go close public comments, and let's go ahead and bring it back to council. Council, final comments.
This is the right thing to do, to continue to pay down our off-balance-sheet liabilities, and during our budget discussion, this is one of the things that we've talked about. People could say, maybe we should put more in at this time. I think we're doing it the right way, and I think that, you know, focusing in on about 90 to 95 percent of the retired people is the right thing, and, and once we hit that level, just hold on and pay as you go with regards to the city manager. So thank you for the recommendation, and I fully support this.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Whitmer. Councilwoman Lewis?
You know, I think that we are very, very blessed to be able to take this obligation down. As being in a position, I'm very thankful that our city manager, and our finance director, and our finance committee, and all of us have been so focused on this, and that we are in a position that we can pay down some kind of liability. It's been a big, um, rock hanging over our heads for many years now, and the thought of making this last contribution and maybe getting to a level where we can kind of level off and reduce our arc after more analysis is good. So I'm in full support of this.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor DeGolia.
I think this is the right thing to do. This was discussed in the finance committee meeting this week, and the finance committee supported this move. They, there was some discussion about priorities in the town, given the significant amount of capital improvement projects that, that we need to do over time because they've been neglected for so long, and I'm sympathetic to that, but I think that this is absolutely the right thing to do, and the staff is going to do a refresh to reassess what the actuarial liability is that's outstanding, given the change from the contributions we've made to this trust and the renegotiated police contract that we have. So I think we're in terrific shape, and I think that with this, we can really start to look at the capital improvement projects as a key thing that we can start to do, and we're doing the master plans to be able to quantify and address that, so I feel good about it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor DeGolia. Since the Vice Mayor and myself are on the same committee, I'm not going to take up any mic time because we're gonna say the same thing. I completely support this as well, and we're not forgetting our streets and roads, and we're blessed to be in a position where we can address some of our long-term concerns, and that will also help this town in its long-term goals. So can I get a motion to
Like the move that we pay into our restricted, uh, fund to pay down OPEP by the EREF, excess EREF funds of $1,020,000.
Adopting the resolution.
Adopting the resolution.
Thank you very much. And I have a second from Vice Mayor DeGolia. Any further comments? Let's call for the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for all on that one. Let's go ahead and move to item number 18, approve an agreement for the Civic Center project management consultant.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the only one I'm not handling, so Mike Passaloff is gonna give it to him for it.
Mike, welcome. Um, this item recommends approval of a consultant services contract with MAC5 for project management services for the Civic Center project for a not-to-see fee of $896,573, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. The recommendation of MAC5 is a result of a competitive procurement process based upon a request for proposal approved by the city council in May of this year. Eight proposals were received and reviewed by a committee consisting of three members of the Civic Center Advisory Committee and the town's city engineer. After reviewing and ranking the eight proposals, three firms were shortlisted for an interview: MAC5, Recon structures, and Consolidated Construction Management. After interviews by a panel consisting of the three Civic Center Advisory Committee members, the town engineer, and a former deputy director of public works for the city San Jose, MAC5 was determined to be the most qualified for this project. After their meeting of July, or at their meeting of July 14th, the Civic Center Advisory Committee unanimously confirmed and approved staff's recommendation. If approved by the city council this evening, MAC5's involvement in the project will begin immediately and continue through construction completion, move-in, and startup of the new buildings and the facilities. MAC5's work scope includes assisting with the procurement and selection of the Civic Center architectural design team, under direction of the city engineer, serve as the town's project manager overseeing and managing the work scope, work product, schedule, and budget of the architectural design team, perform cost planning, construction estimating, scheduling, and cost controls during the design and construction of the Civic Center project, facilitate effective public outreach efforts during design and construction, provide construction management and quality control construction obligations during the construction, and during post-construction activities, perform work necessary for project closeout, occupancy, and startup of the, of the new facilities. Town staff and the Civic Center Advisory Committee believe utilization of an experienced project management firm is a necessary and effective way to deliver this important civic project. The necessary technical expertise provided by MAC5, such as the cost estimating, the cost of scheduling and management controls, and focused management of all project facets during the planning, design, construction, and move-in are beyond the capabilities and resources of town staff. Funding for those projects provided in the approved Civic Center CIP program that the council approved earlier this summer. That concludes staff's presentation. We do have several representatives from MAC5 here this evening, as well as a member of the Civic Center Advisory Committee that participated through the process of the RFP selection.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Any questions for staff or MAC5 or the gentleman that was on our panel?
Vice Mayor DeGolia. Just go ahead. A couple of questions. I understand that this contract will be paid for over the 30 to plus months that is contemplated, and that the Civic Center project is contemplated to be paid principally from private funds that are yet to be raised, supplemented by the funds that we have in the library account and in the building account to replace the, the building part, right? Out of this, I, I couldn't understand, the, at the end, under fiscal impact, it shows what's being asked from the library JPA for this year, and I, an amount that looks like it's estimated from the building capital and capital improvement fund, but it didn't exactly make sense. If you're looking at an $896,000 contract, what is your estimate about where that's going to be paid from?
Yes, the fiscal impact portion of the staff report simply identified the funding sources that are currently available.
Okay.
But we did do some calculations, and although, because the exact cost and size of the library has not been determined yet, based on work that was done during the master plan process, you know, the library consists of about, I'm told, one-third of the total cost. So, so given that, there is adequate funds in the building capital fund and in the, um, the CIP fund to pay those proportionate shares of this contract. And also keep in mind, this does go through construction and movement, so if, you know, and we're going on an anticipated, anticipated schedule of three years plus minus. But if, you know, of course, construction will not occur unless the fundraising is, the capital campaign is successful. So, you know, this, this contract and the, and the dollars that'll be spent through the project management will be at, at the same pace as the design and as the construction dollars are coming in.
So I, I assume that a significant amount of this payment's gonna come from the capital campaign?
Yes.
The fundraising has to be done because these guys will not have performed until, you know, before then.
Correct. I mean, as, as an example, when you take a look at the different, although they didn't really put in phases, but for instance, the work that we anticipate MAC5 doing during the design, well, that, that represents about 26 percent of this total fee of $896. So, and again, the town probably isn't gonna go much further in the design until, you know, there's adequate funds to construct.
And the contract's designed that way, so they, it's, it's phased.
It could be terminated or suspended.
And it could be terminated or suspended in the meantime. So if the donations don't materialize, project doesn't continue, and it ends there. And so the design phase from the timeline is probably only the 1415 fiscal year. We probably won't get much further than that in this fiscal year.
Councilman Whitmer.
Yeah, um, so first off, I don't recall seeing the list of all the suppliers that, that were asked to bid on this. Was Interwest asked to bid on it?
Uh, Interwest did not propose on it because we prepared the RFD, so it would have been inappropriate for us to propose.
Okay, um, okay. And what type of negotiations did we do on the rates, or these are the numbers that were in the proposal?
Each were the rates that were proposed.
Okay. What's the proposed architectural costs? I know that, you know, we haven't gone out, we haven't, one of their jobs is to work with us on putting together, you know, an architectural RFP and help refine the size of the building, et cetera, et cetera. So, but what is our, you know, when we made our major numbers, what was that number?
I, I don't recall what that number is, but Councilman Whitmer, I think what you might be referring to is, as part of the master planning process, the town did come up with a total estimated cost. And, and in coming up with that total estimated cost, it included all the costs. In other words, not only construction, but all the professional services required to, to complete the project. And, and as far as the, the cost of project management and services, I believe that it does fall percentage-wise within the range that was part of that, that overall budget.
Which was about 4 percent.
Okay, all right. Yeah, 'cause I was trying to determine the overhead, the overall overhead, we're looking at the construction and, you know, and compare it to other, other opportunities, 'cause I know that you did have a number when you walked through, and the number got refined from, from the very, very high number to the number that we see today.
Thirty-two million.
Yeah.
Cut down to thirty-two million.
Cut down to the base. Right, but that's, but I, but it was broken down, and George actually had, you know, had made a projection, but that's okay, we can move on from there. When I looked at the contract, it looks like it's, you know, fixed-price labor hours, obviously, and they are broken down by phases, but, and, but the deal is, of course, the contract is 36 months, we're not really sure how long it's gonna be, but, um, it's, uh, it's really not a fixed-price contract, 'cause that's just fixed labor hour fees, right?
Well, that's correct. The basis
And a projection on there.
Yes, the basis of this fee is timing materials. And so, um, although the contract identifies a number of things they're, they're gonna do as part of their scope, they will only, they're not, they're not gonna be self-directed. So they will only do the scope as directed by town staff.
Okay, but is there, is there a breakdown of the fees by project, by, by phases? Because, I mean, we just got a total number, I mean, and I'm sure that there was lots of detail in the RFPs, and I know that several council members were on the committee, but we didn't get a chance to see that. So I guess the question is
Yes.
What is the breakdown? What's the man, is there a man loading that I'd like to also know how many people we're gonna have on this deal?
Yeah, I, I'm sure, I'm sure that was part of the detailed cost proposal that was submitted and evaluated by MAC5. But, but yes, we have broken it down, and I apologize, we did not include that in the staff report. You're right, that would have been very helpful.
Because, yeah, I'm struggling with the $900,000. I've got a lot of calls from people today on $900,000, and then when you look at the contract, it's not really a fixed fee. It's, it's, uh, you know, kind of pay as you go, and we're guessing where we're gonna stop, and hopefully, these guys have done it before, I'm sure, you know, we don't have any, we don't have your proposal, but I'm sure that, you know, the, the team has looked at lots of people, and, and I'm sure you're very qualified and done this, and I've heard from Mr. Lively and others, you know, how impressed they were, so please don't take any of my comments inappropriately. I'm just trying to weigh the risk. If in fact, a, the funding's not there, and the majority of this funding has gotta be, of course, with private donations, so 26 percent of the square footage of the 9,000 and 25,000 square foot facility, which was what was in the master plan, um, this 26 percent is what the library is, and I realize there's streets and parking and stuff like that that may not make the number a little bit higher, but, you know, the library funds are available today, obviously, um, but, and there are building fund numbers that are, but we're not, you seeming to tap into those, and so we're, we're kind of basing on the come with regards to, to, to the fundraising effort that would start in a couple of months. So if in fact they start, um, and, and the funding doesn't come in, or the timing on the funding, people make pledges, but the, but the pledges will say, hey, we'll give you money in 2015, um, is there any delays or excusable delays or anything like that that could drive the cost up higher? Uh, it's a question really for y'all.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, please, at the, at the microphone so that everybody can hear.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's just
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Sorry. Good evening, my name's Mark Kelly, I'm the founding principal of MAC5. So your question again is
Well, some of the, some of the funding that's coming in is gonna be coming in from pledges, right, that we're, we're doing some fundraising on, and so, and some of it is, is real money that we currently have in budgets, we have today.
Correct.
And so, if in fact, the money isn't there to pay you, and we say we issue you a stop to work
Right.
For it, because the timing, the money wasn't gonna come in until, say, a quarter or, you know, at, at the end of next year, or the middle of next year, and, and you're saying, well, I've got this task, are there, you know, like, excusable delays, or are we gonna be held harmless for that and restarting, or is, is the price of, of the, of your activity obviously would go up? Is that, that's what one would think, is that correct?
Well, I can answer this for you easily. Where, where professional services for not doing the work are not being paid for. If you delay it, it happens on projects, normally, a few months delay, we're not gonna change our fee at all, right? If you go longer than that, you say it's a year off, then we do have adjustments that we could make that are relatively small. What I would offer to you is that if you do have a delay, say you delayed a year, cost escalation around the cost of construction itself is something there you'll pay a penalty for, you know. Or any escalation we would have is relatively incremental, if we had one.
Okay. Um, and on other projects that you've looked at, and again, I got a very glowing report from several people on the, on your committee, on the committee that evaluated you, if you could give us an estimate, you know, there, there's been some preliminary plans on, on square footage, and we know that that's one of the things you all are gonna look at, just as typical project that's gone as far as we've gone, what's the, your, I realize it's very subjective, but what do you think is a potential target of, of, uh, square footage reduction or, or savings that would essentially come to the overall project based on your, you're adding in and providing additional guidance with additional due diligence to the architecture firm?
Sure, I, I can't really address
Reduction of square footage or program area.
You know, that's developed by the needs of everyone in the town, right? So the architect will develop that. Certainly, we have a keen eye. One of the members on our team is a licensed architect who has done it for many years. We would certainly see to it that the program is efficient, that's what you want, but at the end of the day, the program is the program. In terms of cost savings, or you might save money, there's any number of ways that you can do that, from the cost of construction, how you procure the construction, what your soft costs such as IT, FME is
Yeah.
Everything's fair game for best value is what you want at the end of the day.
All right, and, um, are you gonna have people up here located at the, at the site?
We won't be located at the site, no. Our office is out of Amoryville.
Okay.
And hopefully don't hit too many communities like I did tonight.
So we will be at the construction, non-dream design. Design will be more on, you know, meetings and admin bases for meetings, but during construction, we are probably here.
Yeah, we're not housed down here, but we will be on-site. And then, this is Manil Bajacharya, he's one of the team members here, also a principal in the firm.
Okay, thank you for answering my questions.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Whitmer. Councilwoman Lewis, still with us?
I, I am, I'm still with you.
Okay.
I'm sorry I'm not there to meet the MAC5 team. I've heard great reports from the head hoc committee from the CPAC, who did the due diligence and, um, really took the, the lead role in, um, vetting the proposals, and I understand that you were not the lowest bid that came in, nor were you the highest. In fact, the highest bid was something, you know, double or more. So I think that, um, I, I feel very comfortable. Outreach is critical, outreach in this process is critical for our community, and it looks like you do have a fairly robust budget item in your overall budget for outreach, and I think that's one of the things that impressed the head hoc committee, that you seem to be able to do significantly in outreach that's successful. Um, I understand that this is a long process, and we're deciding to, having become part of our family and part of our vision, part of our, the fabric of our, our town, in order to help us create, um, our new Civic Center to bring our community together. And so it's very, it's a very important role that you're gonna play. I'm in support of that, and I'd like to
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Lewis, and sorry you can't be here with us. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for any public comments on this item. Any public comments on this item? Please.
Hi, Marilio. Uh, I was on the, uh, the subcommittee that helped select the firm that we're dealing with now, and I wanted to correct just one thing that Councilmember Lewis said. The primary reason that we liked MAC5 was because of their focus, all through their presentation, all through their RFP response, they focused on budget. They recognized this is a budget-driven project, the costs are absolutely critical to the town and to the people that live in the town, and that was, that was what separated them from the other seven firms that presented. They really understood what the driver was for this project, which is the budget. Plus, they had other technical capabilities, that was impressive, but the budget was the best.
Beautiful, thank you. Thank you very much. Rose, come on up.
Rose, I was also on the subcommittee along with Phil Lively, and I would like to add that the three of us, I'm not, you know, blowing our horn or anything, but, you know, we're all professionals in the field, engineers, architects, professional project managers, and we evaluated all three, or all, first of all, all eight submissions and came down to the three. I could say that, you know, they're all great, the three in particular, but again, what Clive said is that set them off above the rest of the group was that their emphasis on cost control, and I know that's an important factor in this town, in all of us, and they seem to have gotten at the end of the proposal, and I, I think that in addition to that, you know, the solid personnel, it made sense, you know, everything clicked, and we all voted unanimously as our first choice.
Thank you, Rose. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to council. Council, final comments.
If I could ask Rose or Clive a question, was, was Gordon in, in the unanimous as well?
Yes, he was. And, and he also, you know, thoughtfully brought along another person, a retired fellow from the city of San Jose, who was absolutely helpful. I mean, we all concurred.
Good, great, thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Uh, any other comments from council?
Uh, yeah, I've got a couple of comments.
Please.
It's not a big, big issue. One was, uh, you know, obviously in the contract, in, in section three scope, I, I assume that we're, we're leaving it as 36 months, even though they bid it 34 months, in case there's a little bit of an overrun, or was that a typo? It's on B, 3B in the agreement. Um, they agreed to the contract, that I don't know what to tell you. Thirty-six, well, yeah, so it should be thirty, you, you put it in your bid, and your scope of work says 34.
Yeah, the fee, the fee is based on 34 months, but we're okay with 36, you know, I mean, there, there, on a, on a project, this scale, this timeline, you know, a month or two, we're okay.
As long as your manpower slides out, additional two months, and there's not another, another two months of pay, and all of that, it's okay. Um, on the
I understand, looking at, at the overall contract, I know that there are issues with regards to, you know, if there's an issue with closing down the contractor, we have to terminate, you know, for breach, for example. Um, I know that there's insurance issues up to a level of a million dollars, but, you know, it's, you know, I would ask maybe council and, and the city manager, you know, I would think that
council, uh, and, and the city manager, you know, I would think that, um, on, on a project of this magnitude, there should be some remedies additional, other than having to fight with an insurance company to get a million dollars, which, you know, we probably wouldn't get a full million dollars, and it would take a long time to get it. Our experience with working, the one time we did talk to insurance companies, we didn't end up with the amount. But, uh, I, I would think that on, on a breach for negligence or something, there might be in the future contracts that would have some additional, uh, remedies in there, such as re-procurement costs or paying back a certain portion, because we're, we're paying everything up to the time. But, sorry.
Usually, on contracts like this, contracts for services especially, but contracts like this that have specialized services, when we shut them down, the, the contract says basically, we pay them up to the time we shut them down, and we're done. If they, if we have to terminate for negligence, um, normal contract...